Good evening and welcome to the Burville School Committee meeting on October 8th, nineteen, twenty twenty-four, sorry. Our roll call, looks like everyone is here, and Victor Bevelacqua is absent as of this moment. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. There's a flag over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a new member, as of tonight, and I would like to introduce Benjamin Pena. He's our school committee's student representative, and he's also a member of the Student Council. So, welcome, Ben. The next thing is the consent agenda, approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September seventeenth executive session in the September seventeenth regular meeting.
Second. You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Next thing is warrants and invoices.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the September twenty twenty-four warrant for school year twenty-four, twenty-five, number three, dated October eighth, twenty twenty-four. Grand total expenditures, two million, six hundred eighty-two thousand, four hundred thirty-one dollars and thirty-four cents.
I'll second.
You have a second? All in favor of that?
Aye.
And we have one bid tonight?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid for GKT Refrigeration for Rhode Island. Total bid, eighteen thousand, seven hundred eighty-six dollars and twelve cents.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Presentation by the public to the school committee, and anyone that would like to speak, please come to the podium over here. Clearly state your name and address. You will have, at the most, five minutes for public comment, and please be reminded that school committee members cannot comment on any topic that is not listed in tonight's agenda.
It's public comment.
My name is Robert Carradillo. I am from Westerly. Assuming that none of you have to share lavatories or changing areas with members of the opposite sex while at work, then why must our children be forced to do this via your current transgender policy? This policy attempts to make parents think you have the best interests of all students at heart. In fact, the policy discriminates against ninety-nine percent of this district's students, especially our girls, by placing them in uncomfortable, unsafe, and unfair situations. That is evil and wrong. Cowering to RIDE, you have sold out Burville's girls and boys in an effort to save yourselves. There are six pillars of RIDE's unlawful and untruthful transgender guidance, which is not law, by the way, that you must change within your own policy, which many Burville parents may not be aware of. Biological boys may use the same bathrooms and locker rooms as girls, room with girls on overnight field trips, compete with girls and with girls, and against girls, excuse me, athletically. This policy compels teachers to use pronouns based on the direction of the student, and perhaps the most egregious of all, the keeping of secrets from parents regarding social transitioning of their own kids while at school, which is specifically referred to in your policy on page five of Policy P six four three nine. The section's protocol tells school officials to work with the students and the parents should a child indicate an intention to transition while in elementary school, but if it arises in secondary school, there is to speak to work only with the student and not the parent. And there are some attorneys looking at this very closely right now, I assure you. I would strongly suggest that this policy be amended or eliminated. Your Title IX policy is unlawful rubber stamping of the current administration's attempt to erase women, and I will not allow that to happen, I promise you. Title IX was written to protect women from discrimination based on men, not men who identify as women. That is not the same thing, and you all know that, and your solicitor, if you have one, knows that as well. Get biological boys out of girls' sports. No matter how much a boy wants to be a girl, dressed like a girl, think he's a girl, or want to be a girl, he will never be a girl, never. Same as girls who want to be boys, and that is nothing but truth. These policies push a vulnerable population to organizations such as Planned Parenthood, where over forty thousand girls have begun their transition with an initial dose of testosterone, leading to a lifetime of harm and pain, where suicide rates among this group actually increase. They will never reproduce. Get this on your next agenda and change these policies. Other districts are heeding my advice and readying to do the same thing. Every parent, every parent has legal standing in this matter. Your solicitor knows that as well. You can take on RIDE and/or the ACLU, or you can take on your own parents. We just need one. May God bless the families and the children of Burville, and may he also bless the United States of America. Thank you for listening.
Are there any other comments?
Hi. Hello. My name's Lou Pryor. I live in Chapachet, Rhode Island. I grew up in Providence, but spent the weekends down in Chapachet with my family. At the age of eighteen, I'm sixty-seven right now, at the age of eighteen, one day my father was taking me to Rhode Island College, sharing the same car, and he said, "Lou, are you gay?" And I said, "Yes." He says, "It doesn't matter. I love you." So, when I hear stuff like that, a talk of hate, it makes me have a lot of flashbacks of growing up, being gay, when it wasn't accepted at all. I remember a friend of mine, father owned a restaurant on Route forty-four, and he hung himself in front of his mother, because I remember his mother always saying she hated him because he was gay. Then I know many of my other friends growing up, back in Chapachet, Ponagansett friends, all hanging around. A lot of them accepted me, a couple didn't, but then there was a lot of other kids suffering in the sense they weren't happy for whom they really were. And a few of them I know, they drank themselves to death. So you talk about people hating today, I think it was worse when I was growing up, because we had to hide. We used to run Gay Pride Parade, the first one back in the seventies. I remember running from one bar to the other bar, because stuff was getting thrown at us in between the walking down and being proud of who we were. They went, my husband now, for forty-three years, going to be forty-four in November. We have taken in a couple of kids in the past. They have families of their own, and they have now what we call our grandchildren. My grandson comes down and sees us every week. Our granddaughter is, they're sixteen, so they're a little more difficult now. They were easy when they were one, two years old. But now, I see a new generation. I get a little confused. My great nephew, he is now Serena, and he wants to be a girl. And like I tell my niece, I says, "Your son's happy, he's twenties, let him live his own life. Let him be happy, and rather than feeling sad." Another family member of mine is also transitioning from a guy to a girl, and he's doing fantastic. I've seen a lot of girls transitioning. One of my friends who rented an apartment from me, his best buddy was Tommy, and I'm talking to Tommy, I didn't know it was a girl originally, but Tommy is doing fantastic. I think we should help these kids by letting them be in themselves. Let's not hide the problem, because that just makes them hide it in their own soul and brain and mind, and it will cause really confusion more than anybody can believe. So, like I was saying, I think we all should just let the kids be themselves and enjoy their lives, because we don't know what's going to happen the next day. And parents, I hope they accept their kids as they are and not think their kids are wrong. Their parents just love them. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Chris Kona from Richmond. It's important to understand that kids behaving in non-gender conforming ways isn't a black or white thing. As students are growing up, they start to learn about what their strengths are. They learn about who they are, what kind of person they want to be, and what kind of skills they can use when they grow up.
Can I interrupt you?
Yes.
Richmond, Rhode Island?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
They want to learn what kind of skills they can use when they grow up. Creating boxes around them should be based, or what they should be based on gender will create artificial limits on them. So as a boy growing up, there are certain things that were biased as girls' activities. Opening up what activities boys have to conform to drastically improves the kinds of things that they can learn about. So cookies essential for everyone to know. Everyone needs to eat, and wants to eat things that they like to eat. I'm lucky I got one class on sewing in middle school, because when I was in the Navy and I finally heard my dolphins underway in the middle of the ocean, it meant that I knew how to sew them on my own coveralls. Boys should feel comfortable trying out for the school play or being interested in a profession in childcare. Some of the most influential teachers in my life have been men. These are all activities that are non-gender conforming at one level or another, and I've seen boys discourage them because they were boys. By the same point, there's kinds of activities that are non-gender conforming for girls. Anytime a girl wants to learn how to change her oil or make repairs around the house, these are things that are perceived as less girly. Wearing jeans and sweatshirts can be to do bar chores before and after school, and they're constantly working with their hands. We live in a town where the girls, they come in and to work on the farms, they have to dress appropriately for the work they have to do in the fields and then in the garages. So of course they're going to wear jeans and hoodies to school. In our school district, one of the recent girls graduated, moved directly straight into a welding job, so it's a great well-paying job that's going to serve her well and has good income potential as she's eighteen, leaving high school, but it's not gender conforming. So limiting schools in one area creates license to limit them in another. If you tell a kid they're not enough of a boy or a girl in one area, they'll perceive it in others. Other kids and other adults will see this as license to bully them for not being enough of a boy or a girl. It isn't just trans kids who will be constricted, it's any boy who wants to try cooking a new dish, or any girl who wants to hit the gym, or is interested in having more or learning more about repairing the lawnmower. Each student is different. There are different things that resonate with them, different things they're better at, and we owe it to them to give them room to understand that. That's the core of Rhode Island's non-gender conforming policies. It's by creating dialogue between the student, the school, and their family about what's best for the student and works well within the school. Creating rigid boundaries about what they can and can't do limits their freedom to succeed. Thank you.
Did I say Burville? I'm a co-chair. I coach the girls' high school hockey team. I've been a coach at this school for eighteen years, and I am very, very proud to say that. In those eighteen years, I've coached a lot of girls, softball girls, hockey, and before that, I coached girls in the rec league. These kids don't have any issues with trans youth. We talk about it, you know, we have, the school has policies, right? And as a coach, I have rules and policies, and in those rules, it's not to make them a better hockey player, it's to make them a better person, and to treat people the way that they want to be treated. And if I do that as a coach, if they leave here and that's what they get from me, then I did my job as a coach. I'm proud to coach here, and I know that this school is going to do what it takes to protect all kids. That's just what I wanted to say.
I'm a resident here in Burville. I've had two boys graduate from Burville High School. My daughter's a freshman here this year. And I've also been the pastor of Bree and Baptist Church here in Burville for twenty years, and I want to share with you just briefly is how deeply and richly my life has been impacted by trans and non-binary people. One of my mentors in ministry, who helped me rediscover my faith when I'd lost it, created the opportunity for me to discern my call to ministry, and has been a wonderful guide through all of these years, is a member of the trans community. I have a number of colleagues across the state and New England who I've worked with on various projects for the enrichment, not only of their faith communities, but the wider communities in which they live, this wider Rhode Island community. And yes, they too are trans and non-binary folks. I have family members. I have a nephew, who I'm so proud of, a beautiful singing voice that brings people hope and joy, and yes, he's trans too. There are so many members of my life that have taught me about what it means not only to be a better pastor, but to be a better father and a better husband. I would not be the same person I am today without their influence. There's no danger. It's only sad when we refuse the gift that our trans and non-binary neighbors are to us. We're only refusing to receive what they have to give us that makes us all better and makes our community much better. Bree and Baptist Church, its friends and its members are proud of this policy. We're proud that the Burville school system creates a safe space for all students. We hope you continue to do that and to grow into that, and we pledge our support to you in any way that we can moving forward. Thank you.
I'm Betsy Alper. I live here in Burville. I have been here for twenty-five years. I have two young adult sons who did not go through the school system. My husband's a teacher in another system, so they went with him. One of their best friends through school was, I'm a social worker as well, and this young man was over our house quite a bit, and I could tell he was, he had a lot of trouble. I wasn't sure what it was, and I could tell he was anxious, he was unhappy. And when he was in high school, he had a suicide attempt, thankfully, just an attempt. Fast forward to last year, my son's graduation party, this now young woman came, and the change in her mental health was, it was so great to see how happy, and see that she and my guys had the same connection, and she was happy, and I hadn't really seen that with her through the years. So, these guidelines from RIDE are important. These are the most vulnerable population, and I appreciate what the school does to support all their students.
Thank you.
My given name is John Clark. I reside in Windsocket. I prefer to be as dressed as JoJo, they/them pronouns. I'm here tonight to voice my support and encourage this board to follow RIDE's guidelines for transgender and gender diverse students in your school system. At heart, it simply extends the protection and safety set for all students. It mirrors our society's endeavors to fight discrimination, prejudice, and bigotry. I can think of no better place to start. I am fifty-nine years of age. I conduct my life according to my experience, heart, and reasoning. It is by these tenets that I choose to stand before you and testify. I am trans. I am not evil or belong to a cult. My transition has resulted in a much richer life mentally, creatively, socially. Some here would care for you to start a witch hunt, where there are no witches to be found. Though I do not know them well, to speak of them is void of heart, I can clearly hear misdirected fear, condemnation, and persecution aimed at the innocent, which this board is charged with the protection and safety of. And for what reason are they being targeted? For their right of self-expression. Your due diligence is civically important here. I was raised in post segregated South and know quite well how bigotry is preserved. Dehumanization, exaggerations, and ignorance reinforced by separation, that the experience may never unseat the narrative. This fire is being fanned for the preservation of customs, not for the care of students today and those to come. The smoke of conspiracies and interpreted statistics will likely here tonight are too vast for me to address one by one. They can only be cleared by reasoning and vetted research, which is staged diligently as consciously done with the RIDE guidelines, additionally adhering to Title IX of the U.S. Education Amendment. No good path forward in history of time has ever been resolved by discrimination and isolation. I am hopeful that you choose to acknowledge the rights, protection, and existence of all students, that you support expression, and teach the existing diversity of our world uncensored. That you allow teachers their trained profession without being forced to become adjunct police for parents. By following RIDE's guidelines for trans and gender diverse students, you will lay the groundwork for healthier students and how they see themselves and treat their peers. Remain within the law of this land and perhaps encourage a more empathetic and understanding society for the future. It's your clarity and mission with heart, not fear, I am here to call upon. Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll have just one more, and then we have to move on with our meeting.
Melissa Bubble, Windsocket, Rhode Island. I'd like to say, first of all, that I actually do, I work on my car, and it has been encouraged since I was five years old, and I've been working on my car with my dad since then. I also encourage my two boys to learn cooking, sewing, and life skills, like taking care of kids and such. It is deeply encouraged. The discussion about sports and how trans genders are not, or shouldn't be included, is pertaining to the physical sports, where a born girl can get seriously injured by a born guy or boy that has transitioned into a girl. It has already been proven, especially when it comes to wrestling. I stand before you today as a concerned parent, deeply invested in our children's future. Over the past several months, I've attended numerous school committee meetings across Rhode Island. What I've witnessed is alarming. The current RIDE policies seem to open the door for those with ill intentions under the guise of support. Some in the transgender advocacy community may label us as haters, bigotries, or other names for raising these concerns. I assure you, that is not true. I am a mother, a daughter, a wife, and here to express my genuine concern for our children's safety. My group presents facts, statistics, and real testimonials to highlight the dangers posed by these policies, especially regarding bathroom access. This issue is about more than just where your kids can go, it's about their overall safety. We're not talking about those who have transgendered, by the way. We're talking about those who have ill intentions using this policy. What we all want, we all want the same thing, safety for our children. However, when those supporting RIDE's rules speak, they often challenge our concerns emotionally, which can create misunderstanding. We're not advocating for the persecution of individuals of different genders. Our primary goal is to protect all students from potential exploitation. As a young girl, I struggled with my identity and conformed to typical expectations for girls, like glitter and dresses, but as I grew up, I've learned to love myself, because I am a girl, and I'm glad to be a girl. Children need time to grow and develop, both mentally and physically. When we interfere with this natural process, we risk introducing mental health challenges. I've read heartbreaking stories of young people who those early transitions, pressured by external influences, have led to lasting mental and physical issues. Supporters of early medical interventions often highlight their benefits but overlook the tragic reality faced by many who transition young. They rarely discuss rising suicide rates or the regrets of those who wish they hadn't pursued hormone treatments so early. It's essential to acknowledge the facts. There are pros and cons to every situation, and in this case, cons outweigh the pros. RIDE must be transparent with parents as well. As you see, there's not many here, and not many parents like myself knew about this. We deserve to be fully informed about the implications of these policies. When changes happen without proper notification, it leaves us in the dark, which is a disservice to us all. I urge you to listen to voices like Bob's and those who share our concerns. Together, we can ensure that safety and support go hand in hand, protecting the well-being of every child in our schools.
Really, really can't have anymore. I'm sorry. Thank you, everyone, for your comments, and everyone, have a good evening. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would like to speak for a minute. I'll keep it very brief.
Thank you. Okay, the next thing we're going to go on is personnel. Leaves of absence, retirements, resignations, and appointments.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the leave of absence for Haley Crossley, physical education health, APE teacher, W.L. Callahan, on or before February seventh, twenty twenty-five, through May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Also Kylie Rotondo, kindergarten teacher, A.T. Levy, on or before January twenty-first of twenty twenty-five, through April first of twenty twenty-five. Also Caitlin Bartolome, guidance secretary, Burville Middle School, on ten-four twenty-four through eleven-eleven twenty-four.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have no retirements?
And Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Cecilia Garvey-Burci, school psychologist, Burville Middle School, effective October fourth, twenty twenty-four.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have appointments.
And motion to receive and file the subsequent appointments as presented.
Do I have a favor?
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next thing is old business, fiscal year twenty-five, Burville School Department budget update.
Motion to receive and file.
Second. We have a second. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Then we have fiscal year 25 Rink Budget Update.
As well, motion to receive and file.
Second.
With a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next is superintendent's report.
Hey, thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of items on my report tonight. Excuse me. I want to start with some, some good news, I think as many of you have heard or Vice Chair Elise and Mr. Landry were there this morning. We've had some great news here at the high school for Mr. Pilling, who was awarded the Harbor Freight Tools for Schools, was named as a Harbor Freight Tools for Schools educator selection to receive $50,000 for his program. It's a competitive application, a competitive grant that is awarded to just 25 educators across the country. And Mr. Pilling was a finalist in previous years, but we surprised him today and it was, it was a really nice event this morning. Several news outlets were there, so there's some stories in the, in the press if you'd like to take a look at that. So, great news, kudos to Mr. Pilling and to the high school team for supporting that program. We had a couple of classes of students that were there, some dignitaries, the deputy commissioner, and a few other folks that were there to, to recognize him and to honor him. So it was a, a great morning, so congratulations to, to Chris and to our construction management program.
Yes, congratulations. Fantastic thing for our school, that's for sure.
And that's more money he can put back into the program, so he has no problem spending money.
Is he gonna build a new school or a house?
Probably get some new.
His wheels are already spinning as we speak, what he's gonna do with that money.
Kudos to him, couldn't have happened to a nicer guy. A couple of other items. First, I want to recognize our student liaison Benjamin Peña. Ben is a 10th grader, joining us here for the first time as a student council, student rep to the school committee. 10th grader, he is on the student council and active in the track team. And he'll bring back information to the student body here at the high school and also bring us any, you know, any ideas or any concerns that he has for, for discussion. So, welcome aboard, Ben. Glad to have you here. And just a couple of final things. Budget update. We have a number of concerns for the current fiscal year. This includes homeless student transportation costs, which is skyrocketing. Outer district placements, which also has been a concern and a rising cost over the fiscal year. Building maintenance funding requirements is an issue in state retirement rates. So as things currently stand, we will need to access our undesignated funds to address some of these concerns. We have some potential grants for which we have applied. And we're also meeting, Business Manager Commission and I are meeting with Town Manager Wood and the Town Finance Director. This is McGovern next Wednesday, actually tomorrow, so this Wednesday, to talk about some of these issues. But it's certainly a work in progress. We've had some considerable challenges for fiscal year 25 already. And as you know, we're, we're in, we're in October. So hopefully we can have some budget efficiencies moving forward. But as it stands right now, most likely we'll have to access some of our undesignated funds because of these unforeseen challenges that we've been hit with the last couple of months.
Can I have a question?
Sure.
Do we expect to meet all of the challenges as far as money for what it is we need?
Yes, but it depends on how much we're going to access our undesignated funds. So we do have a healthy undesignated surplus right now. But most likely we'll have to access some of that for out-of-district tuition, possibly for transportation. Still have to work with the town to figure out where the retirement rate increase is going to come from. That was a last-minute increase that hit both the town on their side and the schools on our side. So lots of work to do in that area. So a little too early to tell. Hoping that we don't, obviously don't have to use much of our undesignated funds, but we may have to use more than we would like to.
Thank you.
A couple of other quick things. Our RIDEcast results, state testing from last year in grades three through eight are scheduled to be released sometime in mid-October, so over the next week or two. Hopeful for the results, but not sure exactly what they're gonna say, what they're gonna, what they're gonna be. We, we were originally hoping that the results would come out this week, but I haven't heard much from the Department of Ed in that area, so I'm not sure if they're gonna be released this week or next. Once they are released, we'll take a, you know, a deep dive into what that data says and then try to address any areas of concern. Couple of challenges that we've had with RIDEcast testing, obviously going back to the pandemic, and then getting our attendance rates up and getting our completion rates for the state testing. So we're looking forward to seeing our completion rates and hopefully continuing some of the progress that we made in previous years. We've also had some new curriculum changes in the last three to five years at both English and math. So there could be some kind of implementation impact that those have. So we're gonna look at all of that once the data comes in. And then, of course, Mrs. Mayo will give you a detailed report in the next couple of months, either in the November or December school committee meeting. She'll present a detailed report on that. And finally, last but not least, we recently met with the Rhode Island Recycling Club regarding a formal recycling, reuse, and compost station at all of our elementary schools. So this would put us in compliance with state law that takes effect next year. We're actually a little ahead of the curve with this. We've been doing some of these things for a while. But we are beginning in November at Stair Farm and then rolling it out at Callahan in December. And then hopefully if things are successfully implemented, we will roll it out to Levy and the middle and high school. It's part of our Get the Foam Out grant, supporting this initiative, so all of the costs will be covered by that. But the recycling club basically has stations set up in each of the cafeterias. So as kids throw their, their lunch away, there's a spot to put the uneaten food. There's spots to put their recyclables. They have all different stations, whether it's gonna be go to compost, go to the recycling center, or somewhere in between. So it's an education component for the elementary students involved in that. We're hoping if we can really stress these things at the elementary level, then as they move up to the middle and high school level, it'll become almost like second nature. So kicking that off in November at Stair Farm and then I will keep you updated as that further develops. That concludes my report for tonight.
Have we done away with foam trays?
Yes.
We have, and we use plastic?
We order trays for Stair Farm. Stair Farm is the only school at this moment. They don't have a dishwasher. So we're just working on logistics about transporting trays back and wanting to have that function.
Do we still have the gentleman that comes and collects?
We do.
Food stuff?
It's a different company.
Do we have to pay for that?
Yes.
Okay. We didn't pay for the other one, did we?
We did.
We did. I didn't realize that.
A very small one. This one's a little more expensive.
Thank you. Okay, the next thing, thank you very much for that, for those reports, Dr. Salito. And we have reports of administrators.
Madam Chair, if I may, I think we just need to make a motion for receiving and filing administrative reports.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second with a huge thank you.
We have discussion? Yes, very nice job, everyone. Thank you very much for all that. Looks like people are really doing more than their capacity sometimes. Thank you. Reports of school committees, subcommittees? Do we have any this time?
I had the Callahan School Sits Committee last week or the week before. As always, awesome group over there, doing a great job. They, I think the biggest takeaway from Callahan right now is the, some of the safety concerns that they're looking at out on the kids' playground, right off of, to the left side of the school. There's some wood chips in the playground. The wood chips are very, very old. They keep adding some to them, but it's, it's growing to be an issue with proper drainage, water drainage. It's building up in certain areas, not allowing for some of the fence gates to close and lock. And they're also, the teachers have been finding themselves running across the street to get soccer balls and basketballs and things that fly over the fence. So they're looking to, you know, possibly get some grant or some sort of funding to kind of get that playground where it needs to be. There's some, you know, growing safety concerns with the different surfaces they have there. Some of the surfaces are very old, breaking down more into dirt versus the safe padding of the wood chips. And especially the fencing, the fencing needs a lot of big repair. So in my eyes, kind of some, some safety concerns, not only for the kids or if somebody wanted to just come right through the fence, they could easily get through, but also for the teachers constantly having to walk across the street and get, you know, playing balls and things like that. So, you know, seems like something that, you know, could easily be resolved if, you know, if we, we kind of put some, put some brains together to come up with a, with a plan. I think it's passed, just keep adding more wood chips to it. So, you know, luckily, you know, for that whole school, that seemed to be maybe one of the bigger concerns is the playground and, you know, how, not necessarily the slides and the playing apparatus. That's all, you know, newer and plastic, so it's not like old rusty metal. It's more of just kind of the grounds around it. So, but other than that, doing well, testing scores came through. Seems like the start of the year has been pretty successful for them other than Mr. Brissette having to send out a few emails about the buses. But per my last conversation with him, it has settled down a little bit. So, so all is well over at Callahan, but we are looking for some, we need some money to fix that playground up. But other than that, two thumbs up over at Callahan. Looking, looking great over there.
I have a question or a comment. I know the, what is it called? The group that takes care of the field across the street? That's the Board of Administration. Do they have anything to do with the school and with that playground that's on the side of the school?
It's some serious gray area and I don't, I'm sure there's other people that know much more, but I believe the town has helped out in the past when they could. They've helped out with some wood chips when they had extra ones, but I don't think anybody is on the hook for, for that. And I, I believe that that's the reason why it's kind of like, well, you do it. Well, I don't want to do it, you do it. Well, I'm not doing it. It costs money, you know. So I think the back and forth of, you know, whose land is it? Who's, who's gonna properly take care of it? That's kind of up in the air, it seems. So I think if there were a little more certainty on, all right, you're on the hook for it. This is what we need to do. These are the fundings we can use for it. Again, to my understanding, little understanding being fairly green, but that's kind of what it sounded like. It's a little bit of help from here, there, and everywhere and, and, you know, doesn't really get much, much movement per se, so.
Maybe we could look into the Levy Foundation? There's usually money there.
Okay.
And we're not asking for a lot, lot.
Well, we don't know. And that's the other thing, it's, you know, we're, you know, I know for, for Bill Robinson, our facilities guy, he's a really smart guy, you know, I, I know he has looked at that. I, I think it's passed like, hey, we just gotta add more stuff to this to, you know, we need some new surfaces. So I've recommended reaching out to Esposito's, which are doing more landscaping for the district, just to pick their brain, kind of off, off, you know, off record. I'm friends with Mike Esposito. He runs the landscaping part of that, just to pick his brain. Like, hey, what could we do here? You know, what type of surfaces should we use in there? Where should the drainage be? Things like that. So it's kind of, it's more to like, hey, we need help kind of redeveloping, redesigning this versus just kind of throwing a couple hundred bucks at it with, with a few little things. So, you know, I think kind of the baby steps of figuring out who's in charge? Where are we gonna get the money and then who's gonna make the plan to make it better? So we're kind of at that point right now and just talking around and seeing, seeing what our options are. So hopefully we'll have some more stuff to do. But, you know, I don't know if it's, it's not really like we can just get a bunch of volunteers together to, to help. I think we need a little thing, a little more than that, so.
So just to add to that a bit, I, I talked to Mr. Brissette a little about that. And we have DPW going to Callahan this week, either tomorrow or Thursday, to put some wood chips down in that playground area.
Yeah.
So I think that will, hopefully will address the immediate concern. So it, it looks like there's really two, two issues, right? We have the immediate issue to make sure kids are safe when they're out there because the wood chips are much lower than the concrete area where kids can trip. So that's kind of an easy fix for now. But, you know, as Dave said, the long, long-term solution is probably a redesign of that whole area to look at that and then try to figure out a way to make that a little more conducive for playground equipment for the kids and, you know, less of a safety, safety risk. So long-term project will take a little bit.
Oh, totally.
A little bit more, a little more money?
Short term, what could we do? Like get some fencing straps, fix those for the time being? Maybe put up some, you know, fencing a little higher, like stuff that I think we could do kind of grassroots and not have to do as, as, you know, big overhaul. But stuff that would totally help immediately, so we're looking into that.
Thank you. Terry?
I attended the Austin T. Levy School Improvement Team meeting and I'm happy to report how thrilled the faculty is over there that they have room now. We had our meeting in an actual conference room. No more squeeze it into Monica's office. And they're very thrilled with having all that extra space over there. And Dr. Salito was kind enough to show me, bring me on a little tour of the, the new wing of our pre-K. And wow, how impressive. You got, you gotta take a, take a tour of that. It's, I, I thought I was walking into one room, like, kind of like at Austin T. Levy. And it's really well laid out and well thought out. And kudos to whoever was involved in planning that and doing it and.
Terry, if I could add to that.
It's really.
Pilling's construction kids, freshmen and seniors.
I'm not surprised.
Are working on that program, that's what I was told.
Yeah.
And my son happens to be one of them.
Yeah. I'm not surprised. Yeah. So, yeah, so thankful for that, right? Monica?
Thank you.
I don't have anything to report, but there is a middle school sit meeting tomorrow at 5:00. It's virtual, so if anybody needs the link, they can email me. And then I know Mike sent in his report about the healthy, Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition. I unfortunately cannot attend this year because this full-time job thing kind of got in the way. So.
I told you not to do it.
I know. So I'm hoping maybe somebody else could, it's, it's always a great time. It's very early in the morning.
Dave's going.
Oh, you're going? Thank you so mu- okay. So I'll get a report from Dave. Thank you. I hope they do laughing yoga like they did that last time.
Also Sylvia, just to mention it and get it out there, Dr. Salito sent us all an email regarding McKenzie, right? McKenzie Cleary?
Yep. Volleyball.
Volleyball. They're raising the banner for her accomplishments.
That's Friday.
Before the 6:00 varsity game on Friday night in the Dome. So if he can make it to support this young lady, it would be awesome.
So we recognized her up here last month for her.
Yeah.
All-state achievement in track. And now she's getting recognized in the volleyball game for her all-state achievement in volleyball.
So.
Really great.
Um, Mike, are we walking in the parade for homecoming?
I sent, I will be sending an update on that on Friday. Got the invite today from Kim Prestala.
Okay.
So yes, anybody who wants to walk or participate is welcome to do that.
Okay.
What's the date?
It's the 26th.
Twenty-sixth.
November.
October.
No.
October 26th.
Yeah, I know. I know, because all my dresses need to be in by then.
It's my granddaughter's birthday. She thinks we're giving her a parade.
Thanks for adding that.
Yeah.
I will send that information out to the school committee on.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if I missed it.
Okay, thank you. Correspondence and communications, I guess we have none, or do we?
No, none.
Okay, move on. New business, homeschool applications and revocations.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the homeschool applications as presented.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now we have revocations. I believe we have seven revocations as of right now. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
And that's from Sean? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any, I'm sorry, was there any discussion for that? Sorry about that. Discussion vote, overnight field trip approval, DECA to Charlotte, North Carolina. That would be November 14th to the 17th.
Make a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve.
Second?
Second. And do we have discussion?
Nope, we just hope they have a good time.
My concern is we don't have the number of students and I'm assuming it's around 10, just like last year.
Yes, usually about 10.
And my concern also is that Charlotte, North Carolina was in the path of Elaine? Elena?
Colleen.
Elaine? And I'm not sure exactly what's happening there and we don't have any. I went online to see if, how Charlotte, North Carolina made out and didn't get any information. I just found out that a lot of people who are leaving this or getting away from this hurricane are going to Charlotte to get away from it.
No news is probably good news then.
Yeah, I guess. Okay. Did I already ask all in favor?
Nope, not yet.
No? Okay. We have a, we have a.
Motion on the floor.
We have a motion. And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? Okay, move on. Committee comments on agenda items. And having none, pending issues of artificial field update.
Uh, so I can give you an update on the status of the artificial field. A, a temporary restraining, restraining order was granted, um, on the 5th of October. That's a 10-day order. There is a, a court hearing scheduled for the 15th, I believe, to hear, uh, from the town and from the opponents, the, the other side as well, um, to, uh, present their, uh, their evidence to the judge. And I would assume at that point the judge would make a decision. And that is scheduled, uh, right now for the 15th of October, so we should know more information pending the results of that hearing. The, uh, temporary restraining order was to stop the installation of the, uh, artificial surface itself. Uh, the work is still continuing, um, on site, but they cannot put the, uh, any of the turf down until, uh, the temporary restraining order is, um, lifted. So again, I will give you an update after the hearing on the 15th.
Okay, I wanted to say something on that. Um, I guess committee comments on agenda items, I should have done it then, but I wanted to wait for the field update information. The question that was asked at last month's meeting was, if we were so concerned about the PFAS then, why did we change our information? Why do we change our, the way we, we look at it and the fact that we're allowing it to go through? And I wanted to say what I found when we were going through and looking at the results of what the DPW has found and what all these other people who did testing was. And if, they found out that we had so many places in our, in the land that has so much PFAS, like 175 parts per trillion, which is a whole lot, when right now, our limit is 20, I believe. And eventually it's going to be four. With that information that we got, we also found the, of what, that what was on this artificial field. And this artificial field has like infinit- I tried to re-p pronounce this, I even went online to find out how to pronounce it. Infinitesimal, did I say that right? Amount of PFAS, like about four parts per trillion. And with everything else that's in the environment, in the, in the dumps that we have that are going, the PFAS are flowing down the river, um, in the sites that, um, Mr. McCormick had found around where the field is. And even where it's not and where they, he's not even sure how this stuff got there. What this field will be putting into the environment is negligible. Can't even count it when you talk about what is already there. So, and the only, uh, the other thing is, and I keep getting this from other people, is if we're not gonna let kids play on this field, they're gonna be playing on other fields that are exactly the same thing. And maybe even a little, have a little more PFAS in them because they are older fields. So, in my opinion and for myself, um, I realize that it's, it's really a dumb thing. Because if we're saying they can go on other fields and they're not gonna go on ours, even though ours is probably gonna have less PFAS. And also because there's also so much of these PFAS still in our environment that this is really not gonna make a difference at all. So that's my two cents, thank you. Does anyone else have comments for that? What would like to add?
I would echo the sentiments. I would, yeah. It took a lot of research and a lot of time to really drill down to the pulpits and it's not the field. There's a lot of things out there, we're jumping into our septic systems and sewers and, um, that's where you're, you're gonna have success if you really wanna be honest about how to curb these. We have to get it out of our normal, everyday products, you know? That's where the contamination's coming from, so. It was a eye-opening experience to do all that research.
Certainly was, yes.
Yeah, absolutely. So I, I came to the same, the same conclusion.
Anyone else?
Um, Sylvia, just to echo what you just said, and, and I agree with you, we were asked why we changed our minds. I never changed my mind, what I did was I educated myself, um, which is what we're tasked to do as we sit on this school committee, is to educate ourselves and get as much information as we can. And base our decision on the information that is given to us. After listening to the, the presentation, after speaking to a lot of people about this, I am confident that this field is not gonna be harmful in any way, shape, or form. And, um, I'm confident that our kids are gonna be able to play on this field and be safe. And I look forward to our kids playing on this beautiful new field that the town is gonna, um, put in there for us. I thank the people that came forward, that did the research, um, about the PFAS and brought it to our attention. I've learned more about, and I don't even think I say it right, when I say PFAS.
No, you say it better, PFAS.
PFAS. I've learned more about PFAS in the past couple of months than, um, I ever knew. But, um, again, it's called educating yourself and weighing, um, my decision. I think Donison said it best right at the beginning, is you have a risk, you have to do a risk assessment with everything that's presented to us. And, um, I think it is not going to be a risk of our kids playing on that beautiful new field and I look forward to it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on, number 15, adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You have a motion?
Second.
We have a second?